All right, well, we'll call to order. Gentleman Secretary at five thirty three P M for this study session for Chuck Roberts Park. Roll call, please.
I just want to confirm, this is a question I asked, need to get some clarity on, do I, is it Park's? Commission role to take minutes for this study session?
Um, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Hit the highlights.
Will do. Okay, so roll call. We have Robert Slayton. And we have Ted Walker, Charlie Cross.
Yep.
Melissa.
Melissa, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, Melissa Hendricks.
Hendricks, I will never forget it again. Um, and the council are out of virus.
Ryan's early absence, and I just noted it, but Margaret Bart has not yet been approved by the council, but she will be. The full commissioner won assumes for her next meeting, she's also out of town, so. Uh, I'll, I'll ask city staff about to present about Chuck Roberts Park.
Okay, I have printed out some of the pages from the Parks Master Plan that are associated with Chuck Roberts Park. Um, including the conceptual plan that was designed in twenty twenty. Um, the top page of your guys' packet. Uh, shows what the recommended improvements were at the time of the master plan being completed. And. On. Near maps. What is proposed already, I place. Uh, I've made place markers for them. And these are all subject to be moved, changed. Uh, we're here to do a revision of truck robbers to try and get all. All the different landscapes that have been requested between the dog park labyrinth. Uh, moving the pickleball courts, ADA inclusive playground. Uh, a little kid's playground, the. Splash pad repurposing station. And anything else that you guys have came up with or heard from the community, so we can just start, we'll start down in the lower area by the existing tennis ball courts. Um, already slated to go here is right here in this circle. This has already been approved by city council, it has not been approved to. Change the master plan and add it to the master plan, but it was approved as a project to go into Chuck Roberts, um, and it's the labyrinth. Uh. Ted is currently still working on that, so that that is in progress. Um, we, we, it's been a lot of staff time and Parks Commission time figuring out the location. Uh, so it wouldn't be a staff recommendation to, to move that too much because we've already really exhausted. Pretty, pretty much any possibility of going anywhere else.
And just, just to add some clarity to that, um, one thing council did approve nine months ago. Um, was an amendment to the master plan to include the labyrinth. Uh, but I think the exact location is still subject to the discussion we're having tonight.
Yes.
I think it was a.
Thank you for the correction.
Yeah, basically, um, a line item within the master plan was.
So in effect, it's added to page one of your packet, even though it's not. Doesn't show up.
It hasn't, it actually hasn't been revised on it, okay. I'll note that. Down here, next to the east parking lot is the, this is the square footage needed for the. Um, bladder bags and uh, lift station for the repurposing of the splash pad. Um, this was chosen and selected by, uh, the. Location was chosen by, um, the city engineer Jeff Ballard as being the most feasible position. Um, it's the, it's right off the bathrooms, it's right where our water comes in. Uh, and where our three inch irrigation line that feeds the park. Um, comes out of, so it's the easiest tie-in point, it's the. Most cost-effective location for that building. Um, at this point, we don't have the funds to, to complete this project, so that. It ultimately could move, but moving it anywhere else is just going to add more cost to, to that project.
Just a quick question, can you repeat, I'm sure you said this and I missed it, what it will look like?
So it's all, all citizens are going to see is another constructed building that kind of looks like the bathroom.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's just going to be an above-ground shed, basically.
Mm-hmm.
Um, all the workings is going to be underground and nobody's, nobody's actually going to see it, there will just be a pump in a building that will be above ground.
Thank you.
But, so the footprint of the building is only, is ten by twelve. But we need that locate, we won't be able to build on this size of a location, uh, fifty-three by. Twenty, uh, because of the bladder bags will be underneath, so that won't be buildable space. One thing that's been discussed is right here, the existing playground, so it does talk about in the master plan. Um. To add a adaptive swings and ADA-friendly play equipment. There was, uh, in the master plan for Creekside Park, there was the recommendation to put an inclusive playground at Creekside Park. And due to funding and everything, the Parks Commission chose to just go with a standard playground park there and figured it would be a, a more useful to put an inclusive playground. At Chuck Roberts, which is, which is more readily used.
And has parking.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah.
So.
That was a big factor.
The terminology would need to be changed in the master plan. Uh. To be not just adaptive swings and ADA-friendly play equipment, but to be an inclusive playground, which changes and. Have an ADA equipment doesn't specify that you need to have an ADA surface. So by changing it to an inclusive playground, that makes it to where you're saying it needs to have an ADA, uh, travelable surface. Uh.
Quick question on that, Robert, um, with the same issues that, uh, eventually arose with the tennis court surfany, is surfacing impact an ADA? Um, accessible surface for a playground?
Hmm, um, not necessarily.
Okay.
Because what goes under an ADA accessible surface is concrete, so it's concrete with reinforced rebar. Our issues we have with our tennis courts are that we've done in asphalt.
Okay.
Uh, so. The asphalt is a lot more pliable and it, it moves a lot more than the actual concrete would.
Okay.
We could also, once we dug it up and, um, saw what kind of material we were, we were working with. At that point, you could choose to add, uh, a footing drain, um, there's some other things that we can go along with, we can also build that up a little bit. Um, to help it out. But having a concrete surface, it's not going to crack and separate the way the asphalt surface did with the tennis courts.
Okay, thanks.
The square right here where the tennis courts are, if you look on the concept plan map. That is where the three-to-five-year-old small children playground and sandbox is designated to get. Um. That is subject to change if you guys choose to, uh, the, when the master plan was done, they suggested having a. Older kids playground and a younger kids playground. They've came a long ways in the last few years, um, with playgrounds where they're more sus- sus- More able for all age groups to use, they, they've built them to where you have some structures that are for smaller kids and some structures that are for bigger kids. Um, to help save costs, so you don't end up having with two separate, two separate playgrounds.
Remember some months back, you presented a really nice design from your playground vendor for this sort of combined new space.
Yeah, when, whereas the Parks Commission brought this up, it was, it was that May of last year, I believe, maybe a little sooner than that. Uh, PlayCraft, um, did us a huge favor and took a lot of time and designed a. Uh, inclusive playground to go here, and then it, it was about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I believe, from start to finish. Um, but we weren't at that point of changing the master plan, um, to accept that, so that is still. That, that design was never fully accepted, it was never, um, presented to council, so that is still up for discussion on exactly what we want to do there.
Is that, and the, and the design, uh, applies to the, um, both the bigger kid and smaller kid?
It was just for the larger section with, with the ADA swings.
Okay.
So this didn't include the sandbox.
Okay.
Um, this baseball field, it is point nine three acres, uh, for large dog parks, which is. Uh. Been suggested to go at Chuck Roberts. It says, recommended for large dog parks to be a minimum of one acre. Without. Taken away from the soccer fields, the baseball fields are the only other location where you can get that, that type of acreage, um, to get close to an acre. I just did the point nine three because I using the existing fencing that's already there. Uh, it could easily be changed to an acre. Relatively inexpensive just with changing the fencing. Uh, but anything that goes on the Little League, the Little, the Phoenix Town Little League currently have a lease until twenty twenty-five. Um, so recommendations that you guys put forth to the city council at the Little League fields. Wouldn't couldn't. Wouldn't go into effect until after either the, the lease was given up or, um, the city chose not to re-up the lease. So. Recommendations to change the master plan for stuff at the Little Leagues might still not be feasible. Even after twenty twenty-five, if the Little League doesn't move over to Culver Road.
Robert, would you, could you do a favor and scroll so that we can simultaneously, oh, sorry.
To your point, Robert, also the council would have to vote to allocate that land as parkland because it currently is not.
It's current, well, according to the master plan, it's listed in there as parkland.
In all, in all of the back and forth between all of this, I think that we've established that it actually is not automatically parkland. Should Little League not be there, so I think there are a couple of extra steps in that.
Okay, I'll do some research on that, because.
That would be excellent.
Everything that I had found up to this point has designated as part of Chuck Roberts Parkland.
Okay.
Um, but I'll do some research and I'll get that finalized, so maybe we just hold off on doing anything with the Little League field.
Yeah, I think we just need some more clarity about like the process for that, thank you so much, Robert.
To that point, is. But. Is there anything beyond the fields, right, so there's like kind of that back triangle where there's parking and stuff? Is that part of the leagues, or is it literally just the field area?
They, they also lease the parking lot, yeah.
Because if we're talking about, you know, you're coming on it, onto it, it seems, right, but if we're talking about the. Placement of the tennis, the new tennis courts in that vicinity, right?
Mm-hmm.
We're waiting on a lease for that as well, right?
Well, not necessarily, because at that point, we could, we could deal with the Little League group and discuss that. Because also with that, it's adding twenty-five actual parking spaces up there, so if the Little League would be accepting of twenty-five parking spaces being enough. Um, we would still be able to put our tennis and pickleball courts up there. That would just be, basically, we would, it would be a change of the lease. Um, but to honest point, if. The Little League fields aren't actually deemed parkland, then we might not be able to put the tennis courts up there. Uh, unless we deemed it parkland.
Darby called me a few months ago. And when we were going back and forth on some of this thinking. And said essentially what Anna just said, that, you know, basically, hands-off, it's not technically part of Chuck Roberts Park, even though it kind of looks like it ought to be. Um, and there was some ambiguity about what happens to that lease beyond twenty-five.
Mm-hmm.
And she said, you'll be better off and happier if you just assume you'd have the, the baseball fields. Despite how appealing they are, that's really where I wanted to put the dog park.
Right.
For perspective, um. Okay, can we slide again over so we can simultaneously see the, the point nine three acre baseball field and the large fields between? Yeah, just scrolling up so we can see that, yeah. Um, and then what is the, um, what is the acreage of the Bark Park, of the, yeah, the one?
Of the Bark Park?
Yeah, what's the? Or square, or square footage there, um?
So, about a third of an acre.
Point three-three acres.
Right, okay.
How's that for math?
I was so impressed.
Okay, and so it, it is significantly larger and, and I know we're not, I know despite the hands-off comment, it's still, it seems like. Um, given the community feedback that we got, that it should still be in play, that that dog park could go in another part of Chuck Roberts. And not in the Little League fields, though I know that's, um, might be an uphill battle, but I just wanted to get that visual perspective. Because it looks, I mean, a different shape, one's rectangle and one's, um, whatever you call that, a fan. Um, but it's, it's very comparable in size and, in, um, seeing how the. The main middle part of Chuck Roberts, I'm sure we call that the soccer fields.
Yeah.
Those are currently basically used informally as off-leash dog parks, um, it seems, uh, quite comparable, and although, um, one acre is at the minimum. Kind of the minimum, um, would, would be better than nothing and consistent with what sort of the feedback we got in the surveys would be in terms of. What people might want.
I mean, my, if we can't consider anything past the tree line, past those soccer fields. I don't know if there's any decision to make as far as Chuck Roberts, that's what it feels like to me, like, like, where are we going to put a dog park, where are we going to put tennis courts, where are we going to put anything?
Well, the, I, I guess the one we haven't talked about. Today yet is there are those two rectangles roughly shaped, um. That are, uh, yeah, where you're wiggling your mouse, either one, either one on the left or the right, those are going to be. Probably an acre and a quarter, acre and a half a piece. One of those which would take entirely new fencing and advantage if you don't have a ball field, uh, so the expense would be greater. Um. So, you know, one of those two rectangles, your choice, our choice, somebody's choice. Um. So, yeah, like that, or the opposite one. Um, seems like a good dog park spot. Me.
And another perspective could be that. That extremely limits the open space at the park and, and.
Yep.
Makes it a playground with a dog park.
Yeah.
But, I mean, the other one remains open of the two rectangles.
Right.
Yeah, it's, I mean, this is a study session, it's to brainstorm and come up with different ideas. Um, one, a couple of things to keep in mind, I met with the urban forestry out here to look at a possible arbor day planting, um, at Chuck Roberts. And there was a handful of kids on the. South field playing soccer, and then there was a baseball team using the backstop to have baseball practice.
Right.
Um, at five o'clock in the evening. Um. There, there is use out there currently, I don't know. I don't know how it would be received to take one of the, you know, largest open grass areas and turn it into a dog park. Um.
Maybe this is another community survey, yeah.
Yeah.
But we've done well with those.
As part of this, just, I mean, because outside of the dog park and the tennis court question, and I know I've brought this up a little bit with you and Gary, but I, I would be curious, it's. I will let go of this eventually. I'm really curious what it would look like if we explored a little further, putting the tennis courts slash pickleball courts at Lynn Newberry Park. Um, I, just because that tennis court is not available for the same grant funding that helped build it, um. Uh, there's shade, there's parking that would make those courts nice and accessible still at Lynn River, Lynn Newberry Park, and it might help. Facilitate getting something built without waiting to see about the limbo of the Little League fields. Maybe it won't work and that's okay, but I am curious.
The, the biggest hangup of Lynn Newbury is the city doesn't own it.
Right.
That's, that is, that's the biggest hangup with doing anything at Lynn Newbury, that it's ODOT right away, we lease that property from ODOT.
So would we be going through a lot of bureaucracy, getting permissions from ODOT to do anything there?
I would. To put that amount of money in. And, I mean, Gary's here, Gary might be able to speak to it, but I would imagine the city would. Um, only feel comfortable if they own the property.
That makes sense.
Um. Gary, do you want to speak on that at all, or?
Well, it'd be difficult to get any funding from any agency to.
Mm-hmm.
Build one, to build one of the properties, it's really difficult.
Mm-hmm, that also makes sense.
But. So, it's definitely. They're waiting based on officers and what they're reporting. I think that plans.
Mm-hmm.
Right. They have a good. Really long thought.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
That would be my concern, yeah.
I guess, one thing I wanted to kind of piggyback off of what, what Counselor By is saying, can you, Robert, would you mind resizing the shaded area now? Um, dragging it sort of down to, yeah, from there down to just one acre. Um. So it's at that kind of minimum.
That's a bunch.
Yeah, and. What acreage is needed for, I guess, two questions, two-part question. In terms of the, I know the drainage is, that's, is the big issue, in terms of a location for those, is that, would that be? That space there, would that be sufficient in size and also, oh, drainage-wise, far enough up the slope? To be, uh, basically right next to the dog park, but yeah, there, is that, would that be in play? Structurally.
Yeah, you would have enough. You need. Right about there.
You can envision some happy dogs getting, um, free tennis balls. Uh, but that wouldn't be the worst thing in the world. Um, I don't, there's probably, there are probably a million unforeseen problems of those two being up against each other like that, but. Um, just playing with this idea that the dog park would go there and, you know, it's, it may go elsewhere, who knows, but that's, it's, it's nice to visualize that, so that. Could be a.
You know what I like about that idea? Is if you took those two rectangles that we now have side by side and scoot them over to the right into the other. Chuck Roberts rectangle where your mouse pointer is currently wiggling, that gets the pickleball courts, yeah, like that, that gets the pickleball courts away from houses.
Yep.
For noise mitigation.
And complaints.
Something like that, yes.
Complaint mitigation.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, well, no, I mean, we, we, we would like people to be happy.
Yeah, no.
Good thinking, Mark. Parking, parking be a little better there, I guess, I mean, people certainly. People that play pickleball, I'm sure don't mind walking a little further, but it is, it is a little more convenient there. And it reduces the need to walk. Free unleashed dogs across the space there, whatever, I don't know, um. Yeah, I mean, that does look like a better spot.
Yeah. Yeah, because that was one of the problems I was having with the pickleball court in that skinny triangle at the way back. Is that the only place there's enough room to wedge the pickleball courts in is kind of almost in the backyard of a few houses up there.
Yeah, it's got more space there than it does currently where it's located.
Yeah.
Uh. No, and actually, that's not as close to the houses as I was picturing.
Yeah, there's a huge briar patch there.
Um, and they've also, like, I, I've mentioned before in our meetings, um. USA Pickleball has teamed up with a company that builds a. Uh, a soundproof barrier that knocks the sound down by fifty percent, that easily attaches to the cyclone fencing. That would go all around the pickleball court, so they require it on any USA pickleball-approved court, they require this to go on the, on the fencing. Um, it's how they put them inside, you know, uh, residential communities, how they put them inside, uh, condominium, condominium communities, and they. Design this, um, soundproof fencing to go around it when these pickleball courts are in the middle of a community. To help mitigate the sound.
Yeah, cool. I confess I've not been, I've not looked around at the, the baseball fields, are they locked and signed such that only, that nobody can go in there unless they're, okay.
They are, there's a lock on the upper parking lot, the lower ones have, have. Uh. They have gates, but they're just to keep people from driving, they're not completely locked up to keep people off of them, um, but. Um, but by the least, the Little League uh, community are the only ones that actually have access to me.
Okay.
Something, one other thing to just think about in all of this, Gary, you brought, you've brought up a couple times the suggestion slash need to pave the walking paths in Chuck Roberts Park for liability reasons.
Yeah, we have that on the agenda for our regular meeting.
Okay.
To discuss.
Great.
And currently with the changes that are being recommended, our path right now is currently granite. So with looking at other options for our paths, it's not saying we couldn't reroute them a little bit. To make it more feasible to help fill the dog park or the tennis courts in these locations.
I will say, if this is the layout that the commission is interested in brainstorming with further, I do like that it opens more of the space connecting in with the playground, it just makes it feel less chopped up in general.
If I could make a recommendation to the, the current backstop that's right here, if this is a layout, I would recommend turning this into a multi-use field and reinstalling a backstop on this side in the corner. Uh, cuz I know a lot of teams, a lot of little teams and even travel ball teams struggle to find places to practice. And so this field gets, even though it's not really a baseball field, but it's got a backstop and it gets used a lot through the months of March, April, and May.
I guess it's a great idea.
Can I ask, uh, what is the what is the consensus of the community about having a larger dog park? I mean, is it really strong, or is it just like a desire?
We
Kind of out there.
It's been a while since we were, I was on that, just speaking, cuz I was on the um, dog park subcommittee that put out the survey for this, and we got over a hundred, a hundred respondents, um, and I can't give you the specific numbers, but I could share them with you later, but the, the consent, the, the overall, the majority of, of folks were um, in favor of having a larger dog park um, in this area. But recognizing too, there's um, big selection bias in that who's filling out the survey, those kinds of things is a big change, so, you know, um, anyway.
Yeah, and that was one of the recommendations that we sent to the city council was, two recommendations, wanted to change the dogs allowed on pathways, leashed in Chuck Roberts. To build a large dog, dog park.
And as I recall, one of the motivations was, the, the current one is really too small for large dogs. And having the large and small dogs mixed together causes occasional problems where, you know, the little eight-pound toy dog is getting attacked by the eighty-pound,
Yeah.
You know, big, strong dog, um, even if it's just in play.
A little further context is the master plan does have a larger dog park at the Suncrest Park, but it's gonna be at least ten years.
It's ten to fifteen years out, yeah.
And we have a very dog-centric community.
We do.
And you gathered some great
Trying to do something sooner.
Fast track that a bit and, and take care of that issue, cuz it really has become, I mean, uh, my, my son and I have just kind of stopped going, um, cuz it's become basically a off-leash large dog park already. So providing the infrastructure and resources, the kind of motive there.
Oh, is that the backstop you just drew over there?
Yeah.
Nicely done.
One hundredth of an acre.
Oh, we can't afford that.
So Charlie, Charlie, when you mentioned uh, another survey, I missed that, was that, was the idea to do a more focused thing, asking people specifically about that part?
Well, yeah, it was, it was, given that there is kind of a casual soccer field and a casual baseball field there today, does using up one of those spaces as we currently have sketched, you know, does the community feel that's worth it? Yeah, especially with moving the backstop, so you can, that can be, that one, the left half there can be both casual soccer and casual baseball, just not at the same time.
Or that could be a really fun new game.
And the community wanted, uh, I read somewhere that the community also wanted, you know, space to be able to gather and to have social gatherings and events and stuff like that. Would that be enough space for that with that, taking that big chunk for the dog park?
Well, I kind of, to Mark's point, right, does it, does it make that space, the soccer field space more open, more available, because there are no off-leash dogs over here, you know, I mean, that's
Yes.
That's a question.
It does, yeah, presumes people will, and this is, I don't know if this is probably beyond our, our scope here, but
Yeah.
Just, just looking at the, my own statement here is that, looking at how people have used the park, uh, and I'm sure Donna Ruiz would agree, that it doesn't matter whether you put a large dog park in there, there will be people that use this, what we have envisioned the left-hand side, they will be using that as their dog park. There's not much we can do about that, but yeah.
And there could be more enforcement of, you know, our current current statutes. If it's like, well, you don't really have much of an excuse now, here's your large dog park right here, so.
What can dream?
All right, so I took the, uh, one of the challenges that's listed in the Parks Master Plan on the second sheet I gave you. Um, it challenges our limited gathering space for group events. I took that more under the fact that we only have one shade structure with tables underneath it. But we really, so, what you'll see a lot of on weekends, especially in the summertime, is you'll see families will show up. My guys that are on call, they show up at six AM, and they'll show up to Chuck Roberts to open the bathrooms and clean the bathrooms, and somebody's already came out and set up party supplies on all the tables in the gazebo. And so once that happens, everybody's really respectful about it, nobody fights over it, never had that issue to my knowledge. But that takes the gathering space, and that family has a gathering space until they're done, they might not show up till eleven o'clock. But they've unofficially rented that, that, that gathering space. So I took it as maybe looking at adding possibly another shade structure area, place for people to gather, have birthday parties, stuff like that, cuz when it's a hundred and five degrees outside, it's nice to be able to have a little bit of shade.
Yeah. Robert, do you notice the same thing happening with the gazebo at Cameron Springs?
Not as often.
But they do have a bathroom.
They do have a bathroom, which I think we're gonna see an uptick in that, now that they do have restroom facilities. But we, we, we do see that occasionally on weekends where people will come in and they will take ownership over the, the one gazebo that's at Cameron Springs. During the summer months, it's almost every Saturday at Chuck Roberts.
We, we might be getting uncomfortably close to the houses on which street, which street is running uh, by the
Arnos.
Arnos, getting a little close to Arnos, but is that next to the, that's, that might be a nice place for a gathering spot, close to the, to the kids', little kids' playground. But that space that's to the left of the, yeah.
Where the current tennis courts are.
Yeah, is that a
No, I
Could that be in play for gathering?
Yeah, absolutely.
Second gathering space. Nice and close to the playground.
Yeah.
I have a reason for asking this. And do you guys notice the same use of the Lynn Newbury Park gathering, like, space? And do you notice the same type of use at the library playground?
We, there's a lot of use at the library playground, but I, we don't notice a lot of birthday, large group events at the library.
There's no barbecue there, right, right, okay.
Well, there's not the collection of picnic tables. So, um, the, the gazebo at Cameron Springs is really attractive for that kind of thing, but I think it's much less well-known cuz it's not on Talent Avenue, it's sort of, if you're not, if you don't go through that neighborhood, you probably don't even know it exists.
So the reason why I'm asking is I, I'm wondering if one tiny amenity we could add would just be signs that list out the gazebo locations all over town for folks, so they come up and one's full, they can check out the other options. I mean, you know, there's more in town.
Somebody already here, check out Cameron Springs.
Yeah.
Check out Lynn Newbury.
Yeah. Who's parking by boat?
I think, I know Ashland Parks has some of those spaces that are um, by reservation, but I'm assuming that requires some resources that we may not have in place, right?
They've, they've got a person on staff that
Yeah.
oversees all that for all of their parks.
First come, first served for talent.
Yep. A lot of the smaller communities, Eagle Point's the same way, all of their, their park gazebos are all first come, first served.
I mean, if we could get another gazebo in, that would be amazing, but also, I, I think a secondary support thing could be just listing out other spots with books to check, but you guys do such a great job making sure we've got good facilities all over town, let's make sure they
Thank you.
Know they can use them.
Do you want me to draw a proposed structure in here? As a possible recommendation?
Yeah, just to have a keep a record of it, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm good with that.
Right, and we're talking about, if the master plan had already talked about having a sandplay area there with cover, right?
And the other thing of putting one in this location, it all, it gives you a bird's eye view of this field where this one, because of the amount of trees and stuff there here, if your kids are out playing in this field, you can't see it from the shade structure.
It's also super close to the playground, so you're having a little kid birthday party and boom, they're just right there.
Yeah.
And it's easy for the adults to supervise both parts and so forth. It's, it's a nice combination.
But far enough apart that like, if there are two gatherings, they feel separate, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're not making any sort of decisions right now, I'm kind of just, but
This is all brainstorming.
We technically can't make decisions.
I have another question in regards to the dog park, would there be any, um, is it just gonna be open flat land, no trees, no structures, no nothing like that, is it just gonna be bare?
What I like about Mark's suggestion is that it doesn't have to skirt the trees, right, it can go around trees that are already currently there, right, there's no reason. I mean, there is some, there's some damage, I suppose, to kind of root systems possibly, we're just like having a whole bunch of activity around it, but
This, so I think the first, the first goal would be to make a recommendation on the location. And then the second goal would be, come up with the design of your dog park of what you would like to see there. We could bring the urban forestry in to figure out good tree species to go into a dog park. The current dog park we have, for the longest time, it was just a flat field. And the public works department added the tunnel, we added the fire hydrant, we added the uh, the gazebo and, and structure, uh, and that was all done in hell, so those were all components that were added after the fact.
Okay. I didn't know if it had to be part of the budget to know all that, cuz you said, you know, if we move it this way, then, you know, that's added budget for fencing that we don't have if it's over by the baseball field and all that stuff, so that was my question was, how much does it eat into a budget if we have to include it?
Yeah, I had the same thought, but Counselor By has not told us to stop spending money yet, so, but I guess that's probably, I mean, but that's not, the purpose is just to brainstorm.
Yeah, we're just dreaming.
Yeah. Yeah, I had the same, same, same question.
Added
Yeah.
Added to consideration for the brainstorm is to know if there's added costs and how much that would influence
Yeah.
The conversation.
Oh, Smart Buyers, would you like to speak?
To that point, is there a recommended fence height for dog parks for large dogs, because that impacts the fencing costs?
I imagine there is, I don't know what that is, but I'll, I'll find out what that is.
Speaking from personal experience, one of my dogs can clear a six-foot fence without effort. So, seven feet is like supportive. I don't take her to a dog park, though.
My experience of owning dogs, watching dogs, caring for dogs, going to parks, dog parks in all kinds of cities and stuff like that, often the dog parks, um, they look rundown if they are used, um, bare, no grass, no, nothing, mud pit, and then nobody uses it. And or they don't use it to begin with as, even though they said that they really wanted one, so, I'm just kind of curious, that was why.
Our, our current dog park gets a lot of use, and when it was installed, it was installed temp, as a temporary basis, it wasn't supposed to be a permanent dog park. So there was zero thought that went into the landscaping and, and how to do it, we, we basically went out there, smoothed it flat, threw grass seed down, let it grow and, and went for it, and we do get bare spots and we'll get some mud holes, uh, but the, the parks crew does a really good job of getting them filled in as, as soon as we can and um, keep it up to the best of its ability. This one gonna be designed to be an actual dog park, there can be a lot more thought out process and going in on how to install it, what type of grass to use, what type of soil to put underneath it, that, that type of stuff, so there would be a lot more thought process involved in putting this one in than the current one.
Robert, I'm guessing it's in the master plan, but the, the current bark park that there's, that's planned, planning to keep that, right? It's gonna be stayed.
And it's planned to keep it, yeah.
Okay.
It's not planned to go away.
Yeah, so that becomes the little dog park.
Yep. Making sure.
For the Yorkies and stuff.
Right. The ones that can't clear seven. For the record, what kind of dog is clearing the seven?
She's a lab pit mix that believes she's a bird.
Superstar.
It's the smaller of my two.
Does she have some poodle in her?
Nope.
She springs. Yeah, that's
So, I thought Talon Urban Forestry was gonna be here tonight.
Julie emailed me, she got confused about the time, and she said she's going to try to join.
Okay. Uh, so, in the study session, um, I wanted to bring up, I met with urban forestry a few days ago to discuss Arbor Day plantings. Uh, and a suggestion, um, that was brought up was to plant the Rogue River Parkway uh, streetscape all the way up and stop right here at this point, with possible phase two of doing in front of the Little Leagues. Um, to add shade to, um, or to add our urban canopy to Rogue River Parkway. It wouldn't affect any of the decisions you guys have looked at so far. Um, it's looking to add from twenty-five to thirty trees from Talon Avenue to the uh, what I call the burn on the backside of, uh, the big fields. It would stay from the back of curb to ten feet beyond the curb, it would stay in that runner, um, running up kind of at a at a S shape, so they're not just perfectly linear, um, to give it a little bit of, uh, a little shape to it.
And Julie did ask if I could add that agenda item
Oh, perfect.
For this evening, because of the urgency of the
The arbiter event.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, something else, because you're bringing up the Urban Forestry Commission, I'm also recalling that the parks, the art committee, Public Arts Committee is working on a mural plan. And I'm thinking about like, the shed that you're talking about being built to house the water reuse. And I'm wondering if as part of this master plan, revisioning the Parks Commission might want to The Parks Commission might want to consider a few other buildings in various parks where they might want to invite Public Arts. Committee to consider a surface for a mural as part of their overall mural plan.
Is that, is that something that would be? Necessary in the in the master plan as far as. If we were just like. We could just do them one off and if they just. Public arts. Had it had an intention that wanted, they wanted to do something, then.
Gary, do you have any input on that? Do you have any input on, do you think it like? Would be supportive with implementation of the Public Arts Committee mural project? To work with them, to invite them to put some of their planned murals on buildings in parks? Do you think that's something that needs to be added to the master plan or something that can just happen on its own? Okay, great. Thanks, Gary. There aren't, there's incoming eventually.
Yeah, she was saying of the water repurposing structure where the pump, the pump house. For the water repurposing for the splash pad.
So we're down to ten minutes uh, before a regular meeting time. Uh, we discussed a lot. Any other comments, Robert? Anything else?
Um, I think we pretty much covered everything, um, that's been discussed in our previous meetings.
Yeah.
And came up with some good solutions. Uh, the only two other things are, um, the current basketball courts and the sand volleyball court.
Yeah.
If those are things that. We like the locations or or wanna kept or moved or.
I was just thinking about that as I was walking through there yesterday, and I was like, oh, could this be done differently, but now when I look at the. The whole map, I just can't quite see another spot.
So one of the. Public comments that is listed out in the in the Parks Master Plan is a second skate park. So which was suggested to go at Chuck Roberts. The location that was originally suggested was where the current volleyball courts are. And it would just be an above ground skate park, just a small little, just another place on the south end of town for for kids to be able to skate at. It is something that could be looked at as a possible addition to the master plan. I don't know that we necessarily have room to add the skate park, but if that was something that we wanted to reach out to the committee. Would you rather keep the sand volleyball courts? Would you rather see an above ground skate park here?
Oh, that's. Shall we consider one skate park at a time?
No, no, I. I was just bringing up.
I know, I know.
My thought is to defer that.
Yeah, that feels like a real deferral.
Maybe that's a sun pressed element.
Yeah.
One tiny thing, do, does the commission want to consider any sort of. Seating with any sort of coverage near the potentially new placement of the tennis courts at all?
Can you rephrase that? I don't.
I'm wondering, like, so if we've got the seating, yeah, so I mean, we've got the dog park there. I'm sure there will be seating inside that. I'm not sure, I'm not thinking like a whole pavilion, but I'm wondering if like we want benches, if we want.
We do have benches right there, where is that?
There's a bench right here.
Yeah, is it just one?
Just one.
Just one.
And I'm just bringing it up because we were discussing covered. Gathering space earlier, no?
Yeah, it's 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 not a bad suggestion. I've I've seen some pickleball tournaments go on and they get, they get pretty intense and to have a place to sit down and get out of the sun for a minute. Is not a, not a bad suggestion.
Well, I'm thinking about it, pickleball appeals to people of all ages, and so it'd be nice to have a spot for, you know, someone who. Needs a break between sets.
Yeah. One more thing also about that, um, and I'm guessing you would have said probably if it was an issue, but the. As I remember at the tennis courts and the reason they're in such bad shape is a lot, a large part because of water. And groundwater, um, does this solve it? Does it get it high enough?
We would, we would have to do a soil test there to confirm.
Yeah.
Um, but the elevation height, I would, I would be confident in saying that it. It's definitely gonna be an improvement, just the elevation change.
And when you were talking about like, um. Concrete under, you know, the ADA structure, is there a way to build the tennis courts in the same way that makes it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it just, it changes the rubberized surface, um, that you put on top of it. From asphalt to concrete, there's a different, there's a different rubberized surface that you you paint it with to to add the color in the stripe. But yeah, you can either do concrete or or asphalt. The recommendation going forward has been to do it in concrete regardless of the location.
Uh, I don't know, we're at six twenty five, any other comments? Welcome, Brian.
Just, do we wanna draw on a shade structure or? No.
I don't think there's any reason not to, yeah, I, you guys feel good about a shade structure there? It's kind of a, um, you know, it's a. Odd shaped space otherwise.
Shade structure and benches.
Yeah.
Okay. Nice. So I will get this put together and get it out of all of you guys, so you guys have a live copy of it. And then, uh, future, we can decide how to make, what recommendations we want to make moving forward.
And now is there, are there any? From the city side, are there any urgent decisions to be made as far as fiscal year or anything budgeting?
Not at, not at this time. So I did put on. Uh, the second last page I gave you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is a leadership page out of there. And one thing I wanted to point out is, um. One of the bullets is to hold an annual meeting with the City of Town Finance Director to understand a budget and. Patients.
Yes.
Um, we are getting into budget time.
Alright.
So it would be, um, it would be a good decision to try and schedule that with Tessa to kind of see where. Stuff lies.
Great.
So that'd be a recommendation.
Such as an April meeting, a June meeting?
Uh, sooner the better.
I think April would be a good one.
Okay.
And then you had noted this sheet here.
Yeah, so the last sheet I gave you, um, I went through the master plan today and these, um. I gave the page number it's on, and these are corrections on stuff that, it's not corrections like what we're doing here, but these are things that have been completed. Uh, and we just need to change in the master plan, so it stays a live document on what's been. What's been changed, what's been completed, like, uh. Service area on page twenty nine, it talks about, um, that we need to add a play structure. Uh, to a section in town to have a play structures within a quarter mile of everybody walking. We added one at Creekside since the master plan was completed, which. Vastly improved our quarter mile walking distance to play structures. So and then there's other things, adding a drinking fountain at the dog park, stuff like that. We just need to be able to go in there and put complete. But these will be things that will, you guys will be making recommendations to city council, so city council can then adopt the changes to the master plan.
Okay.
Ask the question of Chuck Roberts, the multi-use field says existing.
So just kind of to summarize, we talked about this point eight seven acre as a possible, uh. Large dog park, point two five acre there being a placement for the tennis courts and then. Uh, that being a seating area, moving the backstop that's right there over to the other side, so making that feel more of a multi-use. Area, and then we just kind of had some other pieces, um, you know, at this time, we're not really gonna consider the. The baseball fields just because of the uncertainty. Um, and the possible additional steps needed from city council to make them available for park playing. Yeah, and then a couple, yeah, and then a couple of pieces down below, which were kind of already set up for, um. The labyrinthous circle, um, the, uh.
Water repurposing. This is for an inclusive playground.
Yeah.
This is for the three to five year old playground and sand sandbox, and this is a proposed neutral structure.
So, could be nice. Alright, well, uh, we have, uh, come to six thirty, um, I think it makes sense for us to adjourn. The study session at this time. Um, I would also like to call to order a regular meeting.
Do you want to take a five minute break?
Yeah, do you want to, yeah. Take a break.
I wanted to come wish you guys well and see you, I'd like to get to see you tonight, but this is gonna be, this is your last, your last meeting. Alright.
Two Saturdays.
Are you selling your house? There's another. There's another neighbor. My own neighborhood. I would talk to some of the neighbors, some of the, some of the longstanding neighbors, you know, they went back and built and they said it, a lot of people that were rebuilt. So it's a very different vibe.
But that's, yeah. The only concern I really have with that, having a football, you know. Ball close together, it's not quite separated a little bit, because you figure people who have been told to open the garden. So it's separated, therefore we create record of forestry and we made a plant of our own trees. And between the two of them, a long way we can prepare them.
Nice. Yeah, it is, it is. I've gotten sort of attached to them, so convenient. And I left ten minutes early and I'm like. It's not that big of a deal to get.
Yeah, it's his last meeting. Do I want to join the audio? I'm joining, it should just say join. And you know, but do I want to? And now it's talking. Yeah, well. Yeah, I can imagine. Is it on here?
Yeah, so you're going through the system, but it's so we don't, if you have the audio on, please go back.
Ready?
Good.
Okay. Call an order.
Yes. I just have the. The agenda.
Alright, uh, let's call for order at six thirty six. Recreation Commission.
Wall clock doesn't know we changed time.
Roll call, we have Ted Walker, Melissa Hendricks, Robert Slaton, Anna Byers, Brian Marlia Larson. And Charlie Cross.
Alright, so, uh. The calendar, our first few minutes for our very.
Really quickly, as we had emailed briefly about, and my apologies for not reminding you, would you like to invite any. Um, digitally submitted request forms to speak before you go over the. My apologies.
So, uh. Our minutes were sent out to listeners for a diversion, including any additional proportions. And do I have a motion?
I'm motion to approve my minutes.
Second.
Right. New discussion. Alright. Alright, uh, our next, uh, agenda item is for public comment, so, um. In speaking with, um. The mayor of, uh. What would be the most, uh. The most generous, uh, ways we could public comment as. We don't really have a established way since we kind of like had very much public comment or. Mission even, so, um. We're gonna open up the, uh. Oh, we do. Okay. Alright, we do have public comments, so I'm just gonna finish up and just say that, uh. We will make the public comments have this time, uh, both in person and online, and. Um, as we can, again, I will have to be there on a public comment for that item and, uh, that. After, uh, a presentation of information on that agenda, so. Um, we are probably, uh, take that now. Brandon, glad.
Uh, Quinn Porter? Could you please ask the speaker to state his full name for the record and the city he lives in? Thank you.
You're giving public address, please state your name, fully, and your city president. Uh, Brandon.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Here you are.
Cool. Uh, my name is Brandon Glad, I live in the city of Talent on Willow Springs Drive. Sorry, I think I have a bad connection. Um, I'm, I'm here to speak on behalf of the skate park funding. Are, are we going over that tonight?
Right. Uh, do you have your comment now, or, um, you can wait, we will, um, speak to the skate park later on, if you'd like to, uh, do the comment after you heard more information about what's going on.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to hear more information about what's going on with that. I was in the earlier meeting and it looked like there was already tennis courts and you were talking about building new tennis courts. So, I, I
All right, uh, can you, um, the last group, public comment, your first, if you would, if you can, uh,
Adidas has also been following North American sales and a huge tax bill. The company posted a net loss of million dollars in its core business in twenty twenty-three.
We are going to see a beautiful weekend.
Our decision, dear you, if you, uh, would like to make comment at this time, you are able to do that.
It appears she's muted now.
At this time, I'll, I'll come on in.
Hello, can you hear me? I, um, Chair, your, your voice, your audio is really off, I can barely, barely hear you, I don't know about anybody else. But I also would like to speak on item four C after the presentation on the commissioner's letter, please.
So, noted. All right, uh, can you have a couple of comments, either in person or online? I'm gonna add you. Yeah, so, all right, um, hold on, thank you. Yep, um, so, uh, I'm gonna, there is no other public comment online or in the room, um. I'll look at the agenda, uh, the uh, ask the commission to hear a new agenda item, uh, under your business, uh, at this time, I'd like to, uh, moving in front of our, our business four A, I'd like to, uh, consider a, uh, presentation from our Florida Street City, uh, regarding a tree planting at Chuck Roberts Park. We have an objection to that. There's no objection, I would, uh, like to hear, uh, by the, uh, of course.
Hold on, man. Is he gonna get your mic?
Oh, it's for the record.
We're both on the Urban Forestry Committee, so our Arbor Day ideas have been jumping around a little bit, so we ended up, I'm talking to Robert and he suggested, from the grounds people, and he suggested that we take a look at the Chuck Roberts Park, and it's really along that west side, you know where the DG path comes down and goes along, so I did, I went out there and I measured all the existing trees and put them in here, and then, um, we know there's some trees that are kind of sick, we're worried about the, there's some Western red cedars, there's at least two of them that we don't think are gonna live very long, so we kind of interplanted between them on the plan, but we didn't identify trees because we have twenty-five trees that we want to put in here on Arbor Day, and we have two thousand five hundred dollars to do that. So, our plan is, if you all will go ahead with this, is to work with Plant Oregon, they've been incredibly generous, and we usually end up going around with Dave and walking through his stock and looking at it and seeing what we think is appropriate and what we would like to have there. And we're all real tree nuts, so we know what we're talking about when we look at trees, we're not gonna put anything in there that we think won't do well, or that'll be a hazard in any way. And so, um, I did get this drawn up. And we would like to move forward with this on April thirteenth, if we could. Arbor Day here.
Public planting, and, um, there's a lot of trees that's gonna give a, a lot of really nice shade in the afternoon. And, but we're leaving it open enough that you can, you know, walk through the trees and see through the trees. Um, but we really think it's gonna look lovely. And it's a pretty stark place by Road River Parkway there.
Right, so I drew it up, it's, it's forty feet wide, and it, it's forty feet wide and it turns out to be six hundred and seventy-six feet long, something like that. And with all the existing trees, there's, there is a power line, an underground power line in here, and it wasn't marked when I measured it, but we would work around that, in fact, this is just an idea. So, um,
There are already trees that are planted, you know, safe in situation, underground power line.
Right, absolutely. And it will be marked, and we will look out for that underground power line, but this little one right here is the granite path and it goes down here, that end comes back and that goes down here. So, we would be giving quite a lot of shade to that volleyball court and the basketball court, which are really, you know, there's just a few trees that almost by the basketball court, they're a long ways apart. So,
Yeah.
that's down here. Feet that up, and then this is down at the end, so we won't go.
I was not on the agenda.
The trees, there's trees past it, so we won't block any view for driving and for safety and that kind of thing. We are hoping for a mix of some conifers and a lot of deciduous trees. We're looking for that canopy tree that gets up and casts shade. So, it's a great spot for our day sake, you know.
Talk about here. In this area.
Um, is this where the trees start to me? And is this really?
So, this is
Along, along the Road River.
Yeah.
Parkway side.
Gotcha, okay.
It's a, we can't grow up in here because we can't get irrigation up in there yet, we do want to go up there. Really badly, up where T-ball is right now, it's about a hundred and fifty degrees.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's no water here, whereas here, we were talking with Robert, and we can get irrigation there very simple, with these trees taking their run. So, that's what that looks like.
Thank you. That looks awesome.
So, the ones that are colored in are the existing trees, and the ones that are colored in. We may not get that many trees because we have such a low budget, but we just like to work with them. Also, we understand there are some Christmas trees that, uh, people bought some live Christmas trees, and then they don't want, so they're gonna be donated someplace. I wasn't sure. But it's, it's, I think someone came back to Plant Oregon, so we might be able to get, you know, some free used Christmas trees, and again, we'll be picking back that, we'll get. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Jane.
I, I have a question. Um, Robert, i- is there any, and I'm sure there isn't, but just to confirm audibly, i- is there any concern about tree roots, um, i- infringing on the underground power line at all?
No, um, the underground power line currently is already weaving in and out of our trees, um, it's not in conduit, so it there's always a potential, but the, the chances of it, as long as we stay outside four feet away from it, then you're following code and, and so.
Thank you.
It's really very good, I know, to take power line, if we go through what we need to do about that.
That's good, thank you.
So, do you have a motion?
I would because they've always done such a good job on their designs, Jane in particular, I, I would move that this commission recommend the city council approval of, uh, the Arbor Day plan as presented.
A second.
Yeah, I'm gonna just go. I'm gonna, secondly, I can know that the leader on our P short letter. There, there's only here, I know we also had phone that might have limited availability, what is the finance for hosting, the items on the agenda? All right, if there's no objection from the commission aspect, we are, uh, speaking to the, uh, up for AMC here. What's the here? I have online, uh, Tony Barrow.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Okay, Tony, uh, has been retained by this, been aided to assist in submitting a grant application to the Oregon Department of Urban Conservation, Department of Urban Development. Uh, seeking funding for sixty percent of the cost of the original edition of the skate park. Uh, Tony, there's been, he's been all the way through the public works, and I think it's uh, put the city uh, in the sound of Tony. Um, and it has some standpoints very specific. So, he, uh, has prepared an application uh, for submission, but through, in about a week, is that right? You still got that?
Yep. Was that my cue? I, you're a little muffled. You want me to take it from here? Everybody can hear me, okay?
Describe, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, that's better.
Uh, why don't you go ahead and describe what you're working on for the skate park application in terms of the design, uh, and a little bit about what the budget might be.
Okay, um, so, as Gary mentioned, I'm working on a grant application for, uh, Old Town Park, which includes um, the rehabilitation of the skate park, um, there's an RFP out for that pros- that project, and I don't know what the due date is on it, but, and, and so we don't know the exact cost of that yet, unless it's come in, Robert, maybe you could brief me on that. Um, so it includes rehabilitation of the skate park. Um, and then additionally, uh, when I do grant applications like this, I, I, I look at, um, I compare um, the park needs to the SCORP, uh, the statewide comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, and then look at your local document, which is your master plan, and try and match um, the needs and wants of the community and what the state is sort of expecting uh, in your area, and what, what I found, um, one of the, one of the positive things is that I've noticed that there's been a trend at rehabilitating skate parks, uh, through the, through the Oregon Parks and Rec uh, grant process, so that's a good thing. What I've noticed is there's a couple of things in your master plan. Obviously, you identify safety concerns as one of the major things, one of the challenges for Old Town, which is addressing the skate park. But one thing here is, uh, limited capacity for community events. Um, one aspect of this, of this project, I'm, I'm wanna sort of expand or, or maybe, um, how do you say, uh, uh, make, make the picnic area, uh, a little, picnicking area a little bit better. Um, offer some covered picnic area, uh, at the skate park, that could accommodate birthday parties, um, things like that. Um, so that's one, one aspect there that I'd like to, as part of the project, is to add a couple picnic tables and maybe some, uh, seasonal, uh, canopy covers, similar to what you have at the, at the Talent Commons there. Um, and then, something I brought up recently was to try and address this challenge, this other challenge that you have identified, which is limited capacity for community events, and I thought, well, this park could be kind of a neat place to have a small stage, that you could have maybe a an acoustical, or even if you had power to, you could have a small performance there, uh, it's an, and utilize the open field there, um. It could be, it could be a permanent stage, just something simple, uh, not very far off the ground, uh, concrete stage. Um, so I just wanted to throw that out there as an opportunity that we might be able to take advantage of, uh, and address another need in the park master plan as we're, as we're applying uh, for the, the skate park project, it's concrete, there's a lot of concrete work, when we, we're tell the, part of the project, uh, to expand the picnicking area is actually to look at taking, when you look in at the skate park, the left area there, it's a grassy area that's sort of unutilized, is to maybe make that, uh, pour concrete in there and, and add some picnic tables and these, uh, shelters. And that's, so if you have any questions for me, I'll start with there, stop there, and then I could, I could talk a little bit about budget, but I, I really don't know how much the skate park is gonna come in yet, and I um, i- unless Robert has an idea what he thinks it might come in at to redo that.
Okay, so, to reiterate what Tony's saying, is that, uh, while he's looking at building the grant application for the skate park rehabilitation, he reviewed the city's master plan, parks master plan, and he also looked at the state's criteria for scoring these, uh, grant applications. And there are some elements in the, in the, uh, city's parks master plan that, uh, kind of meshed with the state's scoring. So, i- if he's able to incorporate elements into the project, like a covered picnic area or a small stage performance area. Uh, that basically gives you extra points because it's addressing other needs included in the plan, and it, I think, addresses additional state priorities. Uh, so he's wanted to bring that to your attention tonight, get your reaction to it. Uh, before he goes forward with finalizing the applicant. Uh, I don't know if there was, I can't remember if there was a, an original budget to add to the project. Uh, I, I think it was gonna be designed as a, uh, submitted RFP.
For a design build.
Yeah, it was only a build, and we really didn't have a firm budget number, but.
No, we had, we had a, uh, a high estimated cost from a, a skate park company. But
You recall what that is?
It was four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. So, that's, that's, uh, why Tony's on board tonight, is to, is to approach that idea somewhat expanded skateboard.
Yeah, so, question for you, Tony, you, you mentioned, um, pouring some concrete, creating a covered picnic area and so forth. And if I understood you right, that is coming out of the existing grassy area that sits between Main Street and the actual skate park proper?
It is that area that's, when you, when you ride at the entry into the skate park, it's the area to the left between the sidewalk, the path that goes out to the, I think it's Main Street. And it's just an area there that has, I think the water fountain is there as well. We're going to incorporate that into the main grass area.
Against John Street.
Uh, yeah.
If I'm understanding you right, my concern is that entire area, both kind of inside the roughly horseshoe shaped path and that wedge between the path and John Street is well-used, especially I'm coming to my, is coming to mind for me is the Friday Night Markets. Where we have entertainment and vendors and people gathering and such.
Where I think he's in, so there's a spot of grass between the pathway.
Yep.
Let's see here, maybe, I might be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not talking about the demo.
No, I'm, I know, but even outside, between the horseshoe and John.
Thank you, Robert.
People, oh yeah, good job, Robert. There are, there will be booths on the outside of the horseshoe, both the inside and the outside, and there's often a little, not a physical stage, but there will often be, you know, somebody playing guitar and singing and such.
Yeah, that, yeah, that area there.
Oh, that looks good, okay.
Yeah, that area right there, yeah, what I wanted, my goal was.
About, well, you can't see where I'm pointing, but anyway.
I bet you were talking about the area.
Yeah, that.
It's worth a thousand.
Yep. Yeah, I was thinking this area, so I was thinking for.
I now understand better.
Thanks, Robert.
So I was thinking, on the stage side, though, I was thinking down in that, that area that you were talking about, right up against, sort of where that brown area, that lighter brown area is, kind of in that area, I thought that would be a good spot, to be in a, in a good location. You have a smaller gathering there, but if, that's, if you're interested in going that direction, but.
I do have a question, Tony, so with the grant, if parks commission had some sort of a recommendation to the council, the specific location of the, of these items, would those be better at the time?
I don't feel like so, right, I mean, I would really like to have, I'd really like to have a local, some, some of the local, I mean, you all have a saying in the design, I can't, I have till April 1st to get the grant application submitted, so it's, it would be really difficult to go through the design process, but to sort of earmark a budget number to cover these would be a good idea, and then we could work out the the details of it later, I mean, we could just identify on a site plan roughly where it's going to go. I think at that level would be fine. I do have, you know, budget numbers in here to hire, you know, a landscape designer if we need to, or some kind of a designer to help with some of the details of it.
Robert, would you mind pulling the map back down just a little bit, so I can see that space? Thank you. So just to reiterate, for anyone else who's listening, these projects are in addition to resurfacing the existing skate park and adding to the amenities at the park overall. And I totally, it's a point we'll take in about making a more competitive grant application, so that we can secure this funding to help us get this project started. I would be curious, and maybe, Robert, you could answer this, would it be feasible to actually have an electrical connecting point there for a food truck? Because I could see that being really supportive of the growers markets that happened there, the large-scale community events, we use that part for so many, the Harvest Festival, Day of the Death, like, all these things, I could see that being really, really helpful, along with paving it so that something could park there. That might be another option, since we do have a stage in town already, I'm not sure if the fact that we have one would make this application actually less competitive, or more, I'm, I'm not sure, but we don't have a food truck pad.
I would not agree.
Yeah.
Or maybe something that could go both ways, a space like that.
So currently, off the bathroom is where we have our 50 amp plug, and we stretch a cord all the way to that exact location is where we place a spider box for the musical groups that perform at Friday Night Market. So that, that's currently the space that gets used for the local bands and stuff at that particular event. The, the only holdup to a food truck is John Street doesn't have street parking on that side of the street, and they would have to go over the sidewalk. We'd have to, there'd be a lot more thought processes involved, because you'd have to put the driveway in.
Yeah, understood.
Ingress and egress. Now, not saying we couldn't take a parking spot off of Talent Avenue and secure that for, and put power out at that location to add to the grant. And then you have designated street parking for it, but.
So just to clarify, Tony, you don't need to submit something that shows the exact location at this time?
I, I would, I would like to submit a site plan that shows general location, like a simple site plan that shows we're doing renovation of the skate park, identifying an area where we're going to put a picnic, picnic area, covered picnic area. And then if, if you want to do the stage, we can identify an area, but I can list the other things, the details of of electrical and how you're routing it. I don't need to draw that on a site plan or anything for that.
For our study session conversation, I think that there is an identified need for more covered gathering spaces, especially if we can put a grill there, I, again, adding to amenities that are already heavily used and would see more use. I could see that being really, really valuable to our community.
I like the idea of having the food truck more to this, I guess, talent road versus along the other side where it was first suggested, just because of the noise of the, what do you call them?
Generator?
Generators and stuff like that.
If they're plugging in, they are using them.
I'm unclear how this proposed grant funding relates to supplements, replaces the funding for the overhaul of the skate park that was approved half a year or so ago. I apologize.
Unforeseen expenses around the water periods that we route some money that might have been available for the street, but I don't understand.
Oh, rely on, on offer any corrections in my data, but it's my understanding that initially, the city council had designated funding from ARPA for this and some other projects. They are currently considering reallocating a portion, or possibly all of those funds, to a project to replace all of the water meters in town with a new system for reading those meters. And then if there are funds remaining, they would be used for recreation of projects, am I about right?
You're pretty close, and I would invite Robert to speak a tiny bit to the importance of the water meters and why that's happening.
So in, in order to try to make funding stretch further, I would like using other people's money. So we looked at applying for grant funding to cover sixty percent of the skate park, thinking that that with, in combination with other funding, we could probably cover the construction of that project. If it's approved, without dipping back into the ARPA. If you want to, on the water meters. So Robert can provide that, but it's.
It's pretty in-depth, yeah.
Yeah, I just want one comment, and so just, just for the Old Town Park project and applying for the grant, I'm trying to bolster the ability to, to win, win that award by trying to add projects that'll get us points, rather than have it just be skateboard rehabilitation. I think the application will be stronger if there are other elements in it that, that met, that are identified in your master plan and then the SCORP, so that's why you, that's why there's an angle towards getting some of these other things added in there. We know that the skate park is going to be a big chunk of this project, but those points will help a lot.
Yeah, I, I, thanks, Tony, I just wanted to, I'm, I'm new to this and just wanted to understand, this is based on the statewide comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, gets us points, like, if you follow criteria in that, just to understand what you're going off of. You're muted.
Correct, yeah, yes, that's correct, and then if, if you don't, if you don't meet, if there are certain elements you don't meet in SCORP, they look to the local document, the local, your local planning document, which is your master plan, and fortunately, your master plan is identified, and some, some items that you could, you know, do at this park that would, would get you points in addition.
Tony, I'm not sure if this is helpful, but this park specifically, in addition to being a skate park, is heavily used for wide-scale community gatherings that often are serving hundreds or thousands of people coming through town, and are placemaking and identity-setting events for towns. I, I write grants a lot, sometimes language like that is helpful. And so anything that we can do in a grant that represents creating ultimate flexibility for the various types of activities that happen there, I think might also be really helpful, hence some of my suggestions. And then also, I, I'm not sure if you caught any of our study session today, but our Public Works Supervisor, Robert, was sharing how heavily used our gathering spaces are for individual families gathering, and I, sounding like more facilities that support that in a community where there's limited public building space for events like that, especially supportive in the fact that they are free for use. In a community where so many people are living on limited resources, I think all of that might be supportive language for the narrative you're crafting.
Yeah, that's great to know. The, the comment in the challenge is limited capacity for community events. Is that the amenities that that park offers for the events that you have, is what I'm assuming is what's happening?
I would say it would be supportive of current events that are happening, and supportive of smaller private events happening held by community members in public spaces.
I have a question. That, that brown area is kind of oblong, with arrows pointed, is that where bands play, or even?
More or less, it's.
It's usually right about here, just because it gets them under the trees.
Okay.
Because there, there's no shade or anything.
So Tony, is that where you're thinking the little paved area would be?
Well, that, I, I mean, ideally, ideally, but, but I see the issue, you have, you know, late, like, you know, Zelia Park, for example, late evening, you got the sun right in the face of the, of the performers, so it's tough, and I think this is the same scenario, it's facing a little more, more northwest. If I'm correct, facing northwest. But yeah, that's, that's the area I thought would be the best.
Thanks.
Where, I think it sounds like where the food truck goes. Is that right? The food truck goes in that spot?
Right now, food trucks go in the parking bays where you can see Robert.
Okay, okay.
What kind of motion might be?
Well, right now, we're looking for a motion from the Parks and Recreation Commission in support of the city's application for funding to the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for the skateboard redevelopment, skate park redevelopment. Doesn't need to get into the detail.
Well, I've, I've been, I've been fighting for this skate park renovation for almost as long as I've been on the commission. So I'll make a motion, and tell me if it gets to the heart of it, and we can reword it. I would move that the commission recommend to council that we pursue this grant application with the ideas that Tony Brown has presented this evening.
If we could also add to the motion, authorizing the commission to submit a support letter to the state.
Yeah, you can, you can edit that. Yes, I, I still modify my motion and.
I second that, too.
Yeah, it'll be brief.
I'm sorry, I think point of order, we might want to take the public input.
I was just going to make the same comment.
Hello? Oh, good. I was wondering if, if the bathroom structure is up to code, or if maybe some improvements, like, is it handicap accessible? Because sometimes bathrooms will really add on, or pump up the award for grants. But I'm. I can't hear the chair, I don't, can someone else say, repeat what he said?
Clarky, if you can just state your name, your city of relevance, before you make your comments.
My name is Clarky Clark, and I live in Phoenix. Is that all you wanted?
That's, that's fine, if you have any other additional comments you'd like to.
Yes, I do. When I met with Gary, we talked about, about letters from the community being helpful for these grants, and I went out and tried to turn up some letters, and I'm wondering, and not everybody copied me, and I'm wondering how many you got, and if you need more, and if there's still time for more, I, I gave them. And if you need more and if there's still time for more, I I gave them the the March. Fifth deadline. I didn't realize it was till April first. So I would like to get that information. If so, if we need more, then I can certainly drum up some more. I had some really good. Input from that. I think the parks, I mean, the school district was going to write a letter. And some people in businesses were talking about writing letters. So that part sounds really good. And I know they they would definitely be supportive letters. Also, I just wanted to emphasize that this was basically a park that was funded and then. Defunded with the ARPA money. And I I really get. The part about spending someone else's money, however, that will delay the skate park at least a year. If not more, because at the end of that, we still have to raise the rest of the money. So I'd just like to encourage the the city to please try to squeeze this project into the. ARPA funds. That already exist. I I I know the skate park isn't going to cost half, maybe even half of what. What was was predicted in the beginning way a few years ago. So that is that's it. I I think you're on the right track and please let me know if there's any other way I can help. Thank you.
Yes, we need more support letters. Yes, we have one from the school district.
All right. So we have those like. Mission to. Recommend. To city council.
Oh, it was. It was approximately that we recommend to city council. Pursuit of the. Grant funding as Tony Barron proposed, yeah, as well as producing a letter. I guess sort of in support of that position.
So I fear that the city is. I I I'm just confused by what it is that.
From the commission, we're looking for a letter of support.
Yeah.
That we can submit to the Oregon Department of Parks and Recreation. That. Basically says we support the city's application for. Funding under that program for the skate park rehabilitation project.
Having worked with. The staff to. Write that better.
Sorry, I I think we would just need to approve a letter of support as. As are articulated by staff since we can't make decisions. Outside of a publicly noticed meeting.
And it has to be before April 1st is the idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our our. I feel like I've bought money in the bars, but I. So. I think in a sense that's. We recommend. City council to. Pursue this grant. Send a letter of support from the submission as there is.
Yeah.
All right.
It's a very good paraphrase of what I said.
Okay, while while Tony's with us, can we consider item? For. The. So here's here's the question. Under the. State grant program. There is there is funding for large projects. And there's funding for small projects. And the two project, if you submit a large project. And a small project, they do not compete against each other. So you can you can. Do one or the other or both. And not be competing against yourself. So a potential small project. Small being about a hundred thousand dollars or less. Would be paving. The existing pathway. At Chuck Roberts Park. We've noticed that there's a lot of maintenance to that pathway. I've been out there looking at it myself. It gives you ruts in the winter that are pretty severe. Our risk manager, our insurance company. Offered us. Has indicated they might be willing to participate in helping pave. Part of the. Of the pathways and remove the the hazardous conditions that reoccur there. But this program could also provide larger amount of funding to do that. The question is whether or not you want to pave it. And. Tony, who Tony, who's had some experience with this along with me. Broached the question before he started work on the project. Tony, why don't you talk about what? Runners prefer. As opposed to paving. Are you there?
Tony, are you? The question was around runners prefer.
Maybe we lost him. Any heroes, Tony? Okay. So that's the question. Is inappropriate to pave the pathway? At Chuck Roberts Park, the other the other approach would be to dig it out, put a. Different kind of base under it. And leave it as a. Kind of a crushed rock surface. I know there's a right term for the kind of rock.
Right now, it's decomposed granite. Is that right?
So a couple of thoughts on this. One is, as a former runner, order of preference would be decomposed granite asphalt, concrete. Because of the concrete is the hardest surface. It's the most punishing on the body. Any kind of earthen surface is. Best. And then asphalt is kind of squishy and sort of in between. So that's just one runner's comment. My more practical thought is timing on this relative to the things we're talking about with Chuck Roberts in general, you know, as as we discussed in the study session. It strikes me as very conceivable that as we. Drop in the new dog park and pickleball courts, that some of the existing DG pathways. Might optimally be wiggled a little bit from their current position. So it would seem to me to make sense not to commit to. Paving or any other serious improvement to these pathways until we know the total picture. Unless we are wasting time and money.
Oh, one comment. I I I really definitely the the erosion and safety and risk and all that. I hear that for sure. Just. On the other side is also we just that was just approved for allowing leash dogs to be walked. And I believe the paved surface is going to have a lot more heat. Might be problematic at certain times of day in the year. Again, seeing both sides is seeing merit to both sides.
I don't know the the term necessarily on this grant, but I think it goes all the way through twenty twenty six, if I'm not correct.
Yeah.
So as far as. Approving to move forward with choosing to pave the path. We we have till sometime in twenty twenty six to actually spend that money to do that that project. So. Moving those things out a foot here, moving them in a foot here isn't going to change the overall landscape or the cost of the project. Because basically that all that DG is going to get dug out anyways for a proper base to get put underneath it before it gets paved.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't want to build something and then go, oh, it's just in the wrong place.
I can't remember the other commission, the tree commission. But they they sound like they really know what they're doing. I'm just curious about paving with like the roots. Right next to a paved path. Being disruptive. I mean, it's going to be right next to the path as it is now, but I'm sure they consider that in their planning as far as. Roots, but I don't know. I don't know. I haven't worked with them enough to know, but. That's just another thought. You see like roots up and causing destruction along paths quite a bit. So. Like if they work with an arborist or they are arborists.
So they they do. They have. Arborists that they. Use as liaisons and communicate with. Plant Oregon has certified arborists on staff. They know all the the proper regulations, the proper way to do it when planting around a power line to use root barriers and. And different type of tree species. So they 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 put all of that into effect when they're when they're choosing what trees they're putting what in what locations.
Um, yeah, thanks for this opportunity to brainstorm about this other granting potential. I'm curious. I agree with Charlie as a runner, decomposing granite, nice and packed. It's the best for. Runners. I I great point mark about, you know, a paved surface harder on dogs' paws in the summer. And then the point about tree roots with something that's potentially paved or asphalt. Also a great point. I am curious if there's a way to do if we're digging out decomposed granite anyway to pave if. There's a solution that can. Keep decomposed granite while solving the erosion issue. I know that there's like different types of grading that can be installed that is drivable on by large vehicles. To stop erosion from happening in spaces. I'm wondering if that might be the compromise between these two ideas for a comparable price. My guess is it's more labor cost, but less material cost. I could be totally wrong. My other question would be, would this be something that would support funding a larger dog park? Is that a small enough project? Just out of curiosity, since we've been talking about some of this.
I I can't answer the question about dog parks. I have not. Experienced grant funding for them.
That's fine. That that's just like, what about this? But I I would be really curious about the the opportunity to keep decomposed granite while preventing erosion.
Well, it's one of them. Tony, Tony's saying he can't hear us. I'll relay.
I I can hear you now. I'm back on. I had to read. I rejoined.
Okay, so. So you heard the conversation so far?
Me? No, I I just got the last part, which was decomposed granite. Working on drainage thing, I guess. That's that. That's all I got.
You think they would fund a decomposed granite trail?
Well, it it is identified in your local local need to to have soft, what they're called soft trails, soft. Where's it go? The scorp, I don't have the scorp up, but I know that it is listed in the scorp as having. Soft trails. So that would be things that are not paved. So mulch. Granite would be considered a soft trail. In in you have it as goal to and goal to be one increase soft surface trails in parks. So you definitely don't want to take them away.
Yeah. Concerned by the commission. Some of the commissioners was that. They're talking about some reconfiguration. Of uses at the park and. That might be premature. To. Do permanent improvements to the trailer. So. We'll. Have to think about. We'll have some further discussion.
With this. Type of grant. For other projects. Already.
Yeah.
Tennis courts, dog park.
We can also, the question is, can we look at other potential projects that are in the hundred thousand dollar and under range? And we haven't done that, but we could.
Personally. Yeah, I feel premature. We need a lot more input.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we're good with that. We're. Wanted to ask the question because I've got a. A safety hazard to deal with out there, but we can continue to. Raid it and pass it.
In insurance or is it just come to state station?
It's to avoid. Possible insurance claims. And the the main concern with it is in heavy rainfalls, granite erodes, it's. Plot surface is one thing, but there's enough slope coming down that hillside that where all those. Trails intersect just above the playground area. All that water comes right down there and concentrates right there and it erodes big, big openings in it. That we have to constantly go back and keep going. And there's a lot of maintenance involved, especially in that area in particular.
Um, Gary, could you please help me remember the liability issues that recently were brought? Before like all parks and recreation commissions.
Well, yeah, there are any number of liability issues at parks, but one of the issues that's currently.
Thank you. Yeah.
Driving a lot of discussion is that. You know, cities used to have, used to be exempt from liability. For people. You say. Of general use, they trip and fall. People were sprinkling that. Trip and fall on what we're crap on. Something there is there is.
Believe it's called recreation immunity.
And that protected cities from law school, someone basically. Has come up as a part of a natural or cape natural occurrence. See, we're helped by. That. That recreational immunity has been. Going out. So there's legislation that came around a couple of times and had to pay that through the state legislature. Who made a statement. So now cities are have a tremendously. Potential liability for even natural occurring. Events of parts.
So Gary, may I add to that for you?
Yeah, and cities everywhere, including. Brooklyn, and. We need to pay attention to the talent or looking.
Uh, we need to pay attention to the talent or looking for ways to mitigate for this. Uh, particularly in areas where we encourage people to use areas like a pathway. We need to be diligent on maintaining, we're telling people to go there, use those pathways when it's not safe.
Yeah, I just wanted to say earlier this month, um Senate Bill uh fifteen seventy six. Um, it it made it pass to the representatives. Um, it's waiting for signature. It's a temporary fix to recreational immunity as it was, but it's only a temporary fix through Ju- uh January one twenty twenty six. Um, so it sounds like recreational immunity will be shored up, but. Insurance companies are preparing uh cities for um to to start straightening things up, I think is what. That that that's why it's a temporary fix.
Uh, question, can the the pathways be made of alternative materials such as rubber or cycle? Or is that? Increase costs or has more power for maintenance?
I I I would, I'd have to research it. I I honestly don't have an answer to that.
Also, I had one thought rather, I I do think it's premature to redo the entire system of pathways and Chuck Roberts, given the other pending. Things, but um Robert, you were discussing a very localized. Problem at this particular intersection where all the water comes together. Does it make sense to just pave a little bit? You know, to address this specific erosion problem and at least for now, leave the rest of the decomposed granite in place. The stuff that doesn't. You know, get ripped apart every rainstorm. Just thought.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's definitely a possibility. Um, we do have issues other where just not to the extreme of that. That particular location, so.
Heck, even a boardwalk, that'd be kind of fun.
I mean. In favor of paving, I think it makes the it makes the space more accessible to. Elderly and disabled folks. So it seems like there would, that would be a strength for points on a grant and um. And I continue to agree that it. I mean, if we're talking about twenty twenty six, I'm not, I I it's not clear to me the timing of when we would be able to, you know, access and use these funds. And would we be ready? But I would, I'd be supportive of looking at paving it for that reason, if all of the other things we discussed were. Kind of discussed more and and mitigated. I honestly don't see a lot of people running around that small space. Runners typically want. Longer runs than running around one park. And so I think for me balancing like making it more accessible to a wider. More diverse crowd um than appealing to only runners, but I I hear the dog thing as well. The runners I know just run longer distances, I guess, than kind of around circles in Chuck Roberts.
And I like Charlie's idea. I mean, there's a really, I'm I'm hearing the whole risk issue and and so really do support handling and getting quick stopgap. Measures then to help with that.
Well, I mean, we've already got a a a section of that path that's quite. The playground that's already paved, right? It's already. It's not a soft surface. If there is this section that's. That is an issue that's maybe adjacent to that. The controversial things or if they that that section. Change the. General evening of the path for the for the whole park.
I agree. What's worth?
Alright, so uh I I'm not hearing a motion from the question.
We'll be back.
Thank you.
Alright, so moving on. So we have moved over uh four K, which is. Citizen request for baby toddler swing to Cameron Springs. Uh, Robert, let me know that phone call. Baby members that was wondering about um. Changing out some of the.
So currently there is four swing sets or four swings, two sets of two, uh and they're all. Just a single strap, rubber strap swings. There's no no toddler swings at that location.
Inventory.
So we don't keep them in inventory because um they take. They take six to ten days uh from the time you order them to get them in. The ones I just recently purchased um to replace the ones at Commons Park. Um, they they cost a hundred dollars, so. Uh, they're about a hundred dollars a piece. Um, it takes roughly twenty minutes, twenty five minutes to install them. Take the old ones down, put new ones up. Relatively easy to do. Um, not too awfully expensive. It's just a point of preference more more than anything.
First time I took my three little grandkids there because it's just down the street from where I live. I was worried about the littlest one. Uh, I wanted one of those and was surprised we didn't have a mix, as you often see it at many parks, so. I would support doing like one of the four and seeing if that meets the demand.
It's when it comes, so you've got three classifications. You've got what I call regular, which is a single strap. Then you have the toddler and then you have ADA. Um, ADA ADA is more open with a seatbelt strap. Where a toddler is designed for up to three years old because you set them down inside. They can't get out. Their legs go in. In the holes facing one way or the other. The ADA ones are designed for all ages. But they're not as secure as a toddler one. So most people prefer when they have a toddler to use.
Yeah, and what you're calling the toddler one is what I think of as sort of a round bucket with a couple of holes for legs.
Yeah, I like Charlie. I would definitely support a. One of them for now that have babies, you know, babies got a swing too.
My baby's got a swing. You're strong there. You need a motion or? I would move that we replace one of the four Cameron Park sprays with a baby toddler seat. And unfortunately, the littlest grandson is now big enough that it's no longer relevant in his case, but that's okay. The next, the next generation.
Uh, alright. I guess I would kind of put this out to Robert as far as are there. Decisions that need to be made that are motioned that need to be made as far as are we are we talking about? Changing the master plan or are we talking about?
So. There's, there's a couple of things to think about here. In the study session, we. Rainstormed, putting things in in different locations. Um, if you guys feel confident in your locations of. Where you've got everything placed, then you can make a recommendation to city council. Um, that this is what you would want to see as the revision. If we have, if you guys haven't felt that you've locked down the locations perfect yet, or maybe you want to get public comment on it. Uh, then I would suggest looking for that route before you make a recommendation to city council until you get the hundred percent. Opponent in your in your choices of the location of everything.
To Robert's point. To Robert's point, I do think there is a really great opportunity to have a public hearing. And just invite input. We have really passionate community members. Um, and you know. We've we've got a bit of time before the budgeting session that's coming up. It could be great to have that and the meeting with Tessa. And just get some really good information to include to the council outside of the recommendation, you know, the additional supporting it um. Data either from public feedback and a public hearing and or numbers and timelines from Tessa about what seems reasonable for which parts of the project.
Can can I make a suggestion in support of such prudence? Can we take the drawing that we put together and by we, I mean Robert? But with input, um during the study session. Um, label it better for public consumption. So instead of point eight seven A, it says large dog park, for example. Um, label those elements because I think I felt we had pretty good concurrence among us. That, yeah, this is looking like a pretty good sketch and yeah, shade structure here and all the things that we talked about. So that we can use that and say, hey, dear public, here's what we're thinking about. What do you think? As opposed to just throwing a blank slate question out there, which case you're going to get a hundred really good answers, which will be all mutually contradictory.
I that that would be why I would recommend the public hearing so that there can be a bit of a presentation about it.
Yeah, and so I guess I'm really just saying, can we put together a drawing that would support the public hearing or maybe a public survey or both? Um, person in orange.
So what I would propose to do is to make a map just like this when I presented out of the master plan. With the admitted changes that we have discussed in the study session. I'll keep this map so we still have sizes in reference to, you know, the size of dog park, you know, that's proposed, the size of the tennis courts are proposed. But there will be a more illustrated map that'll be a lot more user friendly to see. Uh, and when they actually see the tennis court location and the dog park location uh in the labyrinth. It might be a little easier for people to. Uh, to correlate how it's actually going to look. Perfect, yes.
I like it.
That sounds good.
Is that the spot up by the railroad tracks was going to be the tennis courts and that changed? Sorry, I wasn't here for the study session, but.
Yeah, so so we decided to uh just not consider that.
Okay.
Because there's lots of. Other considerations. Oh, okay. You have to talk to the city council about whether there is park plan. You have to. Talk a little bit about the leash. It doesn't make sense.
And I just wanted to put out and what I've seen work well for soccer is just smaller space. Like that field is large. Um, I don't even know measurement wise if it's a full field, but. I haven't seen people play soccer there. I don't know if y'all have. But yeah, um, it's just easier because I I play soccer. Several days a week and they're usually like five V five games. And so it's a lot easier. To coordinate like footsall sized soccer. Um, and I guess, you know, you. Community members could just use that space and just put out two goals, but I would also. Consider entertaining the the idea of maybe using that space differently, but. Um, it like smaller soccer space and then maybe space for something else. It does add for versatility, but to get like eleven V eleven. Game of soccer there. Um, that takes a lot of coordination and we have large, we have like a large soccer complex for that kind of thing. Um, really close to us in Phoenix, so. Just an idea. I don't know if we're going to present things. I know soccer wasn't was a big deal to the community when they did the um. I think when they did the research for the the master plan. That was a strong voice for that, so I'm not saying to take it out, but potentially making that space a little bit more usable. And I know that would have been a study session session um comment to bring up, but I wasn't here, so.
You're discussing our discussion, so. Yeah, so I uh. So we're. Uh, most likely, you know, I'm gonna check with uh Tessa around uh. Speaking with her, that uh the April meeting. Just to kind of get a better idea of uh the budget and. If you'd like to be at some point after the kind of um looking at. Some sort of a a public hearing for. Present this plan, but.
We can incorporate that right into any regular meeting. It just needs, it just needs to be noticed appropriately.
Alright, do we feel?
If I were going to be here, I'd say yes.
The budget doesn't need to be finalized until the end of June. I mean, of course, they'll be. Um, confirming uh voting on it to approve it uh before the end of June, but still it would make sense to me. Um, timing wise, if you wanted to wait until May to have your public hearing, just to give a little more time to gather input elsewhere. If you need it, and of course it can also be pushed later. It just means that it won't be able to be considered into a budget cycle. Until the following year, however amendments are made. So like again, it's not like a hard and fast thing.
Something else to think about too is you guys are. Having this public hearing discuss, you know, the revision of Chuck Roberts to change the master plan. So the master plan is a live document. Everything that we're, we've discussed. Um, the funding won't be there to do that in one year, you know, so. Part of. You know, part of this goal moving forward is to also make recommendations on. You know, and feasible recommendations on how many years out you'd want to see the tennis courts, how many years out you want to see the inclusive playground. You know, so when you make the recommendation to council, you're going to have timeframes that you would also. Not, and not saying that they don't want to, they won't change that, but I would recommend to have timeframes on when you'd like to see this stuff. And that's where that meeting with Tessa becomes important is because she can forecast future funding. And kind of see where we're at, which is going to help you give a guideline of. Okay, hey, the, the inclusive playgrounds, we'll say four hundred thousand dollars. That's going to take eight years to accumulate that. So then you put on there eight to ten years to do the new piece of playground. You know, so that type of forecasting, so. This getting pushed to, to May, just so you guys maybe have one more meeting to talk about a little bit before you have your public hearing. Uh, when it's not going to make or break any of these projects. All these are, are very large projects. So it's gonna, you guys are gonna have to make a prioritized list of which one you want to see first and going forward. Through the master plan.
Uh, I do. Oh, sorry, I do apologize. I do have to go eight. And, uh, for that record, for that arrangement, I can do notes from the recording, correct? I mean, a few minutes from the recording?
Yes.
Okay, alright, I do apologize, but we're done with voting business, right? Okay, now sorry, sorry.
Alright, uh, having no motions. Move on to.
I'll keep it short and sweet. The sprinkler, or I should say our minutes were approved. Um, from Parks Commission meeting for city council, so that approved the motion for the sprinkler. Um, to be changed to in-ground sprinklers at the one island. So we'll get that on the books. Here, probably the first couple of weeks of April, when we'll, we'll get that project completed. Um, talent tiny park sign, I'm still waiting on Donna. Uh, and then other updates, we've got some sunny seven degree weather coming. Possibly this weekend, so we're going to start firing up our sprinkler systems. Um, so you'll see the crew guys running around fixing leaks, finding broken sprinklers. Mowing lawns, they've, they've already started that. Quite often, uh, a little bit sooner than normal, even with all the rain. This getting a lot of rain and then having two sixty-five degree days. And then getting rain again is really making stuff take off this year, so. And that been pretty quiet on our side.
One talent tiny park question, if I may, uh. I noticed the little gate, which was never operable anyway. It looks like somebody tried to operate and broke it. And as of yesterday, it's now missing entirely. Is that, maybe it's missing because somebody took it away to work on repairing it, or maybe somebody took it as a souvenir. I don't know. But any news on getting the little gate?
Uh, I was unaware that it was missing, but we have cameras on it, so we'll pull the. We'll pull the cards and see what we can find.
Yeah, and it, it's been broken for maybe a month.
Okay.
Um, but just more recently, yeah, it had been broken and people kept it, myself would prop it back up. So you'll see me on video. But, uh, when Julie and I went by there yesterday, it was gone entirely, so.
I haven't heard from Gerlinda. Um, she hasn't spoken about it, you know, being missing, so I'm wondering if she has. Um, some involvement in it, but I'll, I'll check in with her.
Good thought.
And, uh, and we'll pull the camera and, and see what we find out.
I can, do you want me to dive into my report or save it or? Okay, so, uh, Dave Lowman's still working on the ordinance stuff. He's been working on another task that I gave him as well, so. Um, I think we're, we're slowly moving through all of this. The, I'll have an update for you as soon as that ordinance is before the council. The second thing I've asked Dave to look into and it is a part of just like his overall ongoing study session presentations to us about council rules. And functions of various sorts is B City as a subcommittee of parks. Subcommittees have to be peopled by commissioners because they're making recommendations. To a recommending body to the council. And so, um, Dave and I have been trying to sort out. How to best support B City and, um, honor the effort and. Knowledge that is held within it while also staying true to the process. That we need to adhere to as part of bureaucracy and overall city. Governance. So, um, we're digging into that and I will have some updates and Gerlinda and I have emailed. And I don't, I know you and Gerlinda have emailed, but I've updated her as much as I have any of you on all of this and I will have more to say about that. Those are the big things.
So the RFP is still, it's sitting where we were waiting until after the conversation tonight with the grant application. Before we move forward, so, um, that is now in Gary and Tony's hands on. How that's going to go out and when it's going to go out, so. Also be published on the website. So for the record, Hector reported that there's two hundred response to the tennis slash pickleball. Survey and he will generate a report when requested. I don't think there's any actions that need to be taken with the survey. The survey, um, questions are kind of built more towards. Do you want to see more pickleball or do you want to see more tennis courts? So. Once we approving the location of the tennis courts doesn't necessarily mean we have to nail down. We want six pickleball courts and one tennis court or we want three tennis courts. Decide, we're, we're going to have the size and we're going to build the facility to fit that size. And we'll take the recommendations and. Put forth the, you know, the best fit we can for that position out of what the recommendations are, so.
Makes sense.
And that was incorporated into the overall request for how do we, how do we do this?
So.
What is the deadline for submission for? Okay, great, then. Good, the teenager. I will hold my suggestion until next month.
Because there's only two days hence. This, this is where I, I used to go back and look through the, the minutes and go, oh yeah, put that on the agenda.
I would just make sure that Chuck Roberts revision is on there for the next minute. Meeting to continue our discussion. That way we nail that down, so we're ready to.